Good evening. I want to call the Columbia County Board of Commissioners, August 16th. The order. Bow your heads for our invocation. Father, we just thank you for the day. We thank you for the great weather you gave us. We thank you so much for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon this county and the greater Augusta area. I pray that you would bless those first responders, the deputies, the personnel, Father, just all those folks who are out there serving to protect us and take care of us. Please bless them. And I pray that you be with us through this meeting. Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Please stamp a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Constitution, the Constitution of the House, and the people.
As the record show, we have a full quorum of commissioners. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the August 2nd meeting in your packet. If they approve, I will accept a motion to do so.
I make a motion to accept as presented.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Any changes to the agenda?
Not in my knowledge, Mr. Chairman. I believe it's ready for your approval.
We'll go straight into the consent agenda. Commissioners, the items on this agenda have been for committees and received the necessary votes placed on the consent agenda. So if they still meet with your approval, I'll accept a motion to do so.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Questions or changes? All in favor, raise your right hand. Consent agenda is approved. I got a lot of pages up here. Make sure I stay on. Okay, there's unfinished business, and that would be the RZ 220705. I have two folks who have asked to speak. Jackie Coxwell, come on down. State your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Jackie Coxwell, 4601 Greenwood Church Road, Linkerton, Georgia. Oh, so this has already been voted on at the last meeting, but we had had an email saying that it was, that an impact study was being done to reconsider the rezoning. But we just wanted...
Actually, it has not been voted on yet.
It has not been voted on. Okay, that was...
We postponed it this meeting.
Okay, that was our understanding of the last meeting when we were here. So as far as the impact study goes, do we know what that impact study is?
Yeah, we did. It's actually a development, a regional impact study that was done by the Regional Commission. Did receive that. Did have very clear language at the very beginning as we explained to you last, to our last meeting, that this was information only. You take action as you see fit. This is just information they ask you to consider. They brought up some impacts to waters, so they asked for additional buffers. If this is to be approved, they asked for buffers beyond the state requirements. They asked for pervious pavement considerations to lessen impacts to the soils in that area. They did talk about requesting a survey to determine all kind of natural resources, topography, soil, hydrology, tree type. G-Dot came out and said quite a few things. They want a traffic impact study to be done. They want auxiliary lanes maybe required based on what we get from the traffic study. They did say that the driveway would have to be paved. Also went on to say that Gordon Highway will be need to be modified or relocated. The access for this property will be modified or relocated to come off a commercial driveway. And they say that the spacing for the driveway is currently not met, satisfied. So there was a lot of things that G-Dot had to say. That was the gist of what the DRI stated. But again, this is information for you to consider. No binding requirements in this document. Make sure you consider.
The impact study is all traffic? I mean, it's got traffic and environmental and all kind of different things?
They reached out to quite a few people, local cities, Fort Gordon, DOT, McDuffie County, Grove Town, Richmond County, DNR, DOT, Georgia Soil and Water and Soil Conservation Committee, Georgia Environmental Finance Authority. They sent this out to a lot of groups. I kind of highlighted the big responses we got back. Fort Gordon didn't respond. Grove Town did respond, saying they would not respond to a fire. It's out of their zone. Court Resources, they did talk about some of the aquifer system that's in that location, significant groundwater recharge area for the state of Georgia is in that location, low flood risk area. Of course, I won't ever all the G-Dot comments with you. Project projected to generate zero gallons per day of sewage. They mentioned using porta-potties on-site versus a restroom facility. Be served by an existing on-site well. Solid waste is unknown at this time, so big comments for G-Dot and buffers and...
I looked at the G-Dot portion of it, and it was very substantial, the number of approvals that would need to be made at that site.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Coxwell, had you seen that report at all?
I have not. If we knew it was put out to Fort Gordon, this is one of the main reasons why we wanted to put the plant on Gordon Highway that close to Fort Gordon, because it would be a benefit for Fort Gordon. We service Fort Gordon almost daily. If not, you know, this plant is coming from Fort Gordon. All the issues that were brought up about the plant last time, we tried to address those issues, to say that this plant had been on Fort Gordon since 2016, surrounded by numerous buildings, and we never had an issue with all the things that were addressed.
At Fort Gordon, are you able to use the municipal, I guess it's called municipal, water there, or did you have groundwater?
We did. No, we used their water.
But you wouldn't be able to do that here, right?
We would not. It's well water.
Does that list of items scare you a little bit? I mean, that's a lot.
As far as the G-Dot stuff, I mean, we hadn't crossed that path. We were just looking at the specifications that were put forth to us for rezoning purposes, and we felt like we met those specifications, and we were going to go beyond those specifications as far as a buffer and all that. So the G-Dot stuff has not been brought to our attention as far as...
Lot.
Traffic. It is. And that would, you know, Evan Gray is owner of the property. We would be leasing it from him. So it would be, a lot of it would be on him also as far as the driveway, and we would have to get permission for that. Yeah, I mean, if we could go about, look at some different approaches on as far as Gordon Highway goes and G-Dot goes, and maybe address this at another time.
Would you like to withdraw? Is that what you're saying?
Well, maybe not withdraw, just pursue it some more, but get more information on what it would take to get it approved. Like I say, as far as the rezoning, we feel like we meet all those specifications that was given to us, other than G-Dot and traffic.
Thank you. Ms. Wendy Scott? State your name and address.
Wendy Scott, and my address there is 3510. I'm adjacent to the people that are renting the property next to where the cement plant is supposed to be, which belongs to, I believe, Mr. Gray. My parents can't be here tonight. They're sick. But I would like to stand for them also, saying that, like I said before, this is agriculture property. We have beehives. We have animals, deer. We have wild turkeys. We have all kind of animals that we're concerned about. But more than anything, we're concerned about the water. He will be using well water, not city water like he was using at Fort Gordon. We're having a severe drought right now. We have what was a pond at one time. The spring has completely dried up. It's nothing but a small watering hole. It would fit right in there. And all the money we put into catfish and the dock and stuff is null and void. People across the street who have a mobile home, this lived there for years, their well has dried up, and they're having to redig another well. What's to say? They've just started, so I don't know. I haven't gotten with them to see what the outcome was. But like, we have a trailer park that's right down the street, too, that uses well water. There's a lot of people that use well water there, and I just don't see it. My parents use well water. Like he said last time, we've had to dig another well. This is his third well in like 50 years that he's lived there. So I just wish you would consider not only the water, but the environment. And if Mr. Gray wants so bad to have this cement plant, he has property in Aplin. He can move it there. I mean, there's plenty of other places he can put it. I mean, why is he leaving Fort Gordon? Maybe his lease has run out. I don't know. But this is not a place to put a cement plant. The retention pond would be bad for the area. It would look bad, smell bad. Dust would be everywhere. We're just very concerned as a neighborhood, all of us, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments or questions? None? Just for a quick second, sure?
... corridor, you know, for future development. It's already, you know, the site is in the employment corridor for the future development, on the future development map, to be developed for this kind of stuff. Also, the water, as far as the retention pond, we can remove the retention pond. That's actually a benefit to the property. We can remove that, and everything being contained inside the block wall that we were going to install. That's the exact same way we done it at Fort Gordon. Also, the well water, if that's an issue, we have city water from our Grove Town plant that could be, and it's potable water. It could be brought there to that site to be used in tanks. We use tanks at our Williston plant. So as far as well water, if we didn't have to use the well to run their wells dry, we could use potable water from other plant.
This is a 10-year lease? Somebody told me this was temporary.
Well, we...
How long? They said for 10 years.
No, I don't think 10 years has ever been discussed. We discussed five years with Evan. But, you know, that's about where we were at. We could stay as long as possible. You know, that's our plan. But the discussion between us and Evan Gray was a five-year deal. And that's, you know, Fort Gordon is, we've been at Fort Gordon since 2016. We didn't have a lease there. We just had projects there. Those projects were up. And then, you know, the upcoming projects that we're looking at getting, and the projects that we're trying to finish up, that's the reason why we're trying to put it as close as we can.
Questions? Thank you, sir. No further discussions. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion on file RZ 220705. Make a motion to disapprove the request for a rezoning from RA to S1, property located at tax map 054, parcel 010.
My second.
Any other discussions or questions? Motion on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is intergovernmental agreement for loss distributions. Johnson, you want to give us some background on this?
I'd be glad to. So lost stands for local option sales tax. This differ from SPOLOST in that SPOLOST is a special purpose local option sales tax, and is designed to benefit the counties and the cities for certain projects that are being done. Lost, on the other hand, local option sales tax is a sales tax that is designed by law to provide property tax relief through sales tax. The county applies 100% of the lost revenue that we get to all the property owners in the county, county and city, to roll back property taxes. So when you get your property tax bill, you'll actually see a credit for county sales tax credit. That is the lost proceeds. So the more sales tax we get, the lower our property taxes are. Direct correlation. We are required by law to negotiate every 10 years in conjunction with the census with any cities in the county to renegotiate the lost distribution and the formulas that we use to distribute that. There are eight criteria in the law that we use to come up with those distribution percentages. There are no set amounts where each, you know, each person will get a certain percentage. Like, for example, in SPOLOST, there is a fallback to population for an absentee municipality. We don't have that provision in lost. Basically, what the lost law says is that we have to sit down with our cities, and we have to decide what percentage of the lost proceeds go to each city, and we have to take eight criteria into consideration. We did that. We met with the City of Harlem and Grove Town. We took the eight criteria into consideration. Actually, when we ran our numbers, our calculations, we came up with a number that was a little bit less than what the cities are currently getting, meaning the county would retain more. And when I say retain more, remember, it goes to property tax relief to all citizens. So people in the cities are going to benefit from this as well. Even though lost is designed to offset property taxes, and that's what the law says, the law also gives the cities the ability to use it as a straight revenue if they can properly say that without loss they would have to raise their millage rate. Most cities use it as a straight revenue. They don't give it to the taxpayers as a rollback. They use it as a revenue with the idea that if they didn't have it as revenue, they would have to raise their property taxes. So the City of Harlem and Grove Town are well within the law, doing it the way they do it. And most cities in Georgia do it the way they do it, but they do use it as a straight revenue, and they can spend it on anything. It's not restricted funds like SPOLOST would be on projects. They can use it for salaries. It supplements their budget. They can spend it on anything they want to spend it on. We did meet with the cities of Harlem and Grove Town, the mayors of each entity, the manager and administrator of each entity, and some other folks in the room, with addition to our negotiation team, which included you, Mr. Chairman, and the District Four Commissioner. And we've decided to bring a recommendation to this board, and they're taking the same recommendation to the cities, that we just leave the distribution percentages as they are. As you'll see, those distribution percentages are laid out in the agreement. The county would get 86.5% of the lost. Grove Town would get 11% of the lost, and Harlem would get 2.5% of the lost. Again, these are the same numbers that we negotiated last time. Everybody seems to be okay with these, and these numbers that the cities are getting are actually a little bit higher than what we came up with with the eight criteria, but we felt like it was a fair distribution. With that, I'll answer any questions anybody may have about the process or the lost.
Everybody that was negotiating, total agreement of this?
Yes, yes. Both mayors and the city manager in Grove Town and the city administrator in Harlem, all were happy with leaving the distribution percentages the way they are.
Have those councils already voted on this?
City of Harlem has. Is Grove Town, please, sir? City of Harlem, I believe, has, have they not? Do they have to? Yes, they do. I'm sorry. I apologize. So, yeah, they both have them. I have spoken to both managers. My understanding, I spoke to both mayors as well. Nothing has changed. They're happy with the percentages as we've laid them out for you.
At the table, we went through a lot of math and a lot of alternatives, and demonstrated that the percentages that were actually calculated were much lower than what we offered, cities of Grove Town and Harlem. The talks were over quickly, which indicated to me that people left happy. And these are a point of drama all over. Mr. Johnson, you're familiar with this. People come to fisticuff sometimes over the lost negotiations.
Which was not the case this time.
Yeah, so we're blessed that we have a county management that, you know, believes in what John Kennedy said, that the rising tide is going to lift all the boats.
I think you all know that, I know you all know, that I've done some lost consulting. I've served on the ACCG GMA Task Force on lost at the state level, reported to the legislature. So I've been involved with lost for a long time. I'll stop short of saying that I'm an expert in it, but I've done a lot of lost work around the state, and Columbia County's process was probably the smoothest I've ever seen. We did show the numbers. We worked very well with our cities. They were both happy with the percentages. I think we're happy with the percentage that we got. It's a fair distribution. But just as much as, you know, we might argue that we need to give more to the cities, we need to understand that by giving more to the cities means that we would have to either raise the millage rate or cut our budget by the same amount, because it's, for us, lost is a direct offset of property taxes. That we don't use that revenue for anything else.
What are the eight criteria? Could you rattle them off the top of your head?
Yeah, yeah, I can. I mean, I can give to you in basic terms.
Simplified, yeah.
Yeah, so population is always one of the criteria that we look at. There is a criteria for point of sale, although the Department of Revenue has made it clear that there's no way to really determine the point of sale. There are criteria that surround the service delivery for each entity. So who's responsible for what, you know, services are provided? In Columbia County, we provide the majority of the services. A lot of places, the city may provide water or animal control or something like that for the county. But in our case, we provide most of the services for the cities. Let's see, you have service delivery. You also have debt service or the ability to meet your debt service. Digest, the size of the digest is one of the criteria. Some of them, so four of the eight criteria, I would say are measurable. So those are real easy to do calculations on, and that is population, the size of our budget versus the size of their budget, the size of our digest versus the size of their digest, and then the service delivery piece. We can actually calculate that. The other four criteria, it's almost impossible to put a number on. It's just something to talk about.
Correct in saying he's got more, and used it as a revenue stream. All the taxpayers in the county could see a tax increase because of that on their property tax?
Well, yes. If we kept everything the same that we have today, if our budget was the exact same next year as it is this year, and we got the exact same amount of lost revenue in last year we did this year, then we'd either have to cut our budget, or we would have to raise the millage rate.
That sounds like double dipping. Sounds like somebody did a very good job negotiating for their folks out there. But when I look at it in terms of representing my district, I'll look at those cities are taking 13 and a half percent right off the top, and then the rest of everybody divides it up. So the folks in those cities are not only getting those percentages, but they're also getting the county's portion of this. That is double dipping.
The important part, remember, and this is something we've talked about all, and we've talked about lost reform in Georgia. And again, when I served on the task force, we talked about it, and we're talking to the legislature every year about doing something with lost reform. We think lost, the lost law in Georgia needs to be changed. It needs to be reformed. But your point is well taken. If we provide a rollback to every single citizen in the county, why do we then negotiate with the cities to give them additional funds to either continue to roll back or to use as a revenue source? The argument from the cities is they provide enhanced services. So if they're levying a millage rate above and beyond our millage rate, then they ought to benefit from the sales tax as well. So just like we want to give our people a rollback, they want to give the people that they levy a tax on a rollback as well, or keep their taxes low. But that is the argument.
But they don't have to roll it back.
Their people are our people.
Correct. That is correct. That is correct.
It is interesting, though, because you look at the numbers, and our millage rate in 2004 was 9.38. The millage rate that we just passed, which is going into effect, is 8.6. So we're 19 years lower, over 19 years, it's lower than it was 2004. So between 2003, 2004. So I do think that continuing to take all those proceeds and roll back the rate, the right thing to do, because really, it's a, in my opinion, more of a fair tax. The reality is you're taking some of the burden off the property owners, but then whoever spends money, county is paying for some of the government operations. Very much in favor of driving that number as high as we can.
And just for clarification, Mr. Chairman, and I think you know this, but the lost is applied to the M and O side. So it's applied to the M and O side first. So debt service and all those things don't count. But your math is correct, and it's because of lost that we've been able to keep it that low.
Right. Well, the M and O is...
Five.
I looked this up before I came in here. It's between 1988 and 1989.
That is correct.
So that's four years I'm not going to add at this point, so.
And Commissioner Malir's point is well taken, and I have people in the district who resemble Commissioner Malir's. I have 20,000 people who don't live in the town.
Not the city, yeah.
You know, they need to be considered and represented as well in that equation. I'm all for using the money as we do to roll back the millage, as we're supposed to do.
Just reiterate, both cities are happy with what they're getting. I think the negotiations went extremely smooth. We looked at all the numbers. It wasn't just, you know, you're going to get this, or you're going to get that. There was some discussion around it, and they're happy with what they're getting.
Did they get everything they asked for?
City of Harlem asked that they stay where they were. City Grove Town said that they could stand to use some additional revenue if there was a way that we could possibly do that. But I think with the negotiations, we showed them the numbers and said, well, we're going to negotiate.
They're going to get a bit of money.
Yeah, we need to negotiate from what the criteria shows. So instead of negotiating from 11 up, probably need to negotiate from 11 down to nine, and then talk about what happened, or eight and a half, and then maybe we get back to 11. Maybe we don't. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts to this, obviously. But again, I think all entities are happy, and it's a fair distribution of the tax.
And did you say that they do not have to use it as a rollback in the cities, or they're not going to use it as a rollback?
So the law allows them, the law says that lost is designed to be a, to offset property tax. It's supposed to be for a rollback. But there's a caveat in the law that says you can use it as a revenue if it keeps you from raising your millage rate. So it's almost a moot argument if you look at it that way. Some legal terms, I'm sure some lawyer came up with some great ideas.
No offense intended.
My good folks in the legislature. But in our case, I don't think our cities have ever used it. But in their defense, out of the 539 cities, or how many, 580 whatever cities, a lot of cities in Georgia, I would say, I don't know that any of them use it for a rollback. The vast majority do not use it for a rollback. The vast majority use it as a revenue. The vast majority of the counties use it as a rollback.
It's still double dipping, do we?
My mama says, tough tacos.
I'm outnumbered.
Any more comments or questions? There a motion on the floor?
All that said, I make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the cities of Grove Town and Harlem for the distribution of lost proceeds.
Other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. On to...
Chairman, we have filed VA 220801. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance to section 90-147, G10B, use provisions for the property located at tax map 074A, parcel 035H, to permit 24-hour operation, subject to the condition enumerated in the August 4th, 2022 Planning Commission Report.
This is a request to allow an existing convenience store to operate 24 hours a day. They're currently limited from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., I believe, is the numbers required by code. They are asking to go full-time with their system, with their services. We are asking that if you do approve this, to put some conditions on them, that they must provide us with a lighting plan, showing they are shielding all light from the residential properties that are across the street. They are still held to all other provisions of the code, including deliveries beyond 11 p.m. Can't empty the dumpsters at night and disturb the area around them. I have to answer any questions you have.
Do we have any comments from the neighbors?
Other questions?
One comment I saw that was that they were experiencing a lot of crime at that store. There's a lot of break-in.
That was one of the reasons they specified. They would like to have somebody there twenty-four hours a day to prevent burglaries.
Questions? Motion second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Okay, next item, file RZ two-two oh eight oh one. I make a motion to approve the request for a major revision to the existing PUD zoning for property located at tax map zero seven two, parcel two thirty-one Q, and five forty-five, subject to the conditions enumerated in the August fourth, two thousand twenty-two planning commission report.
Second.
This is a PUD revision to allow a third sign for a business being located behind the PAC in the Plaza area. Uh, the PUD did allow for two wall signs for this business. Reason, reason that was done, uh, they're not a dual frontage building, but the rear of the building will be very visible from Bel Air Road, but you will enter the building from the parking lot which faces the PAC. So when you gave this zoning originally, you gave them a sign on each side. They are now asking for a third sign on the end of the building. Uh, they did request, I believe it was a hundred and seventy square feet for a painted mural. Uh, the condition here says it would be limited to seventy-five square feet painted mural for this sign. Questions?
So this is not something that's going to open the floodgates for everybody else who said, oh, I really want a bigger sign. You won't give it to me. I'm just going to paint the side of my building. I don't want to, I don't want to start a trend of everybody grif, putting graffiti on their building, for lack of a better term. I think it, I think this is a, a great design, but it could be a slippery slope if we're not careful. What prevents that from happening?
The sign ordinance prevents it. So anybody would have to come to you to go to that situation, that large of a sign or additional sign. So they'll all have to come back in front of you. I guess you take it on a case-by-case basis. Uh, this is an end unit. Not every unit has that third wall to, to put another sign on. Not every unit's visible from three sides the way this one will be. There's a lot of.
Won't be visible from all sides. It looked like it was blocked to me.
There, there is a freestanding building near it. Um, so you will be blocked from all views, but there are certain views you will see quite well from Bel Air Road.
Well, the picture, um, Commissioner Richardson, I think that you're looking at the east view right there, that's a much bigger sign than what I'm led to believe because they had asked for, what, fifteen by fifteen?
Thirteen by thirteen.
And they're only getting seventy-five. I mean, they're getting something much smaller. So I think that picture might be a little bit misleading.
That's right.
Other questions? Motion second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
Another item, Mr. Chair, it's item twelve B three, bond for Vincent Holmes LLC. I make a motion to accept the construction advisory board's recommendation to call Vincent Holmes LLC surety, uh, surety bond. Staff is authorized to proceed with any required paperwork to fulfill this action.
Second.
Going to take it.
I'll take it. Chris can step in if he wants to jump over. Did receive a, a complaint that was forwarded to our construction advisory board concerning a property owner having some issues with his contractor. That issue was heard by the construction advisory board. They did forward their recommendation to the commission recommending that the bond be called in favor of the property owner. Uh, we did notify both parties per our code of what the recommendation was. Did have time to make an appeal. No appeals were made. Now that recommendation comes to you for action. So the recommendation from the construction advisory board was to call the bond in favor of the property owner.
Good in effect. Builder to do business in the county.
He can still do business in the county as long as he maintains a bond. Have to have a bond on file. So lose that bond from that, or lose a bond from that company, he would have to find another company to bond him. Our codes.
Questions about. Get done without four minutes. That just made me, there was a lot, a lot of back and forth. Whole confusion there. All on both sides. Y'all know that.
Any other comments or questions? Motion and second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. Request for review by committee. Bergeron, you want to speak under public comments? Please state your name and address to the record and please submit your comments to five minutes.
Marlena Bergeron, twenty-five, forty-five Willow Creek Court, two doors down from Gary Richardson. And I'm here because my concerns, as they have consistently been, um, are about maintaining the quality of life here through the green space program, which the state committed back in two thousand to put twenty percent of the current acreage, uh, in preservation in its, its current state. Um, the second thing is the Uchi Creek Greenway, and the third thing is mitigation to climate change with respect to increased risk of flash flooding, increased temperatures, and the loss of biodiversity. My first concern is a question for you. Sometimes it's hard to get information and my question involves all three of those things. I'd like to know what's happening at the corner of Columbia and William Few Parkway. I noticed that a lot of the trees are tagged over there. And last time I got an update, I found out that only ten feet was secured to preserve the integrity of the Uchi Creek Greenway. I'd like to know, has that been revisited? Is that going to be developed soon? And I would like to recommend that we respect the Georgia's law about twenty-foot buffers to the Uchi Creek, to any, uh, waterway, because it would increase the viability of that preserved vegetation. It would help protect Bartram Trail as well as the golf course from future runoff, and it would also protect the Uchi Creek stream. I've recently been certified for adopt a stream program. I'll be monitoring the conditions for dissolved oxygen as well as the pH of that, and it would be really devastating to the community and to the greenway if we had constant flooding.
Olivia Road, William Few Parkway, that is a private part. Make sure I'm top of the same parcel, the one at the corner by Patriots Park.
Correct, correct.
Private parcel. We have had conversation with, uh, Mr. Sterling and I have met with developers that own it. They're out of Canada. They're out of state developers, but they are looking to put.
Has it been purchased yet or has it not?
I believe they owned it. They told us they owned it.
Talks about it. I don't think they, I don't think they've, they're working on playing.
Right. They do not have a use for the entire parcel. They only have a use for a very small piece of it. They're looking for partners to go in with them to determine what they're going to do, but they are looking to put a fast food restaurant on the corner. We have had conversation with them about getting a better buffer from the greenway ten foot. They were pretty amicable to doing that. Again, they're still working on their full plan, so we don't know exactly what they're doing, but they're in conversation with local folks to try to figure out what else can go in that location.
Okay.
They haven't started to clear yet though, right?
So what is the tagging for?
They're doing their survey. We require them to do a tree survey. They're probably flagging stuff.
It only looks like ten feet has been flagged.
That might have been what they did for the easement. But they might be looking at what's existing on the plat, but we have not seen any formal plans. All we have was just bright sketches. What if we did this? What if we did that? But nothing formal.
Will you be posting that to the community at large when that plan is finally flushed out?
It's on our, we have a, if you go to the bottom of our webpage, there's a public hearing notification thing and you can click on it and get every bit of information we have as soon as we have it.
Okay. I would like to put in that recommendation though, that at least twenty-five feet is preserved. I also came into some information recently and I don't know if it's, uh, privy to all of you, so I just thought I would share. First.
I ask a question before I forget what, what I was going to ask before you. Uh, under public hearings, it's already zoned CC. Will they have to come in for a public hearing if they fall into Uchi? And they move forward their development plan, much the plan?
Or if it's fast food, they'll need a drive-through?
Because that would cross.
It depends on what they do. You're exactly right. And some of that things they brought to us did not fit that zoning. Some did, some didn't. So we are literally waiting here.
But what it meets that zoning, they do not have to come in for a public hearing.
Correct. If they're not changing it, correct.
Okay.
Wanted to make sure.
That it, it could go through without a public hearing?
Right.
And just for the record, the county tried to buy that parcel and we couldn't, we couldn't come to terms on it, but we tried to buy it. Go ahead.
Okay. That, what about just buying back that twenty-foot buffer and adding it to the green space?
I don't know if that's a possibility or not, but the time we tried to buy it, they wouldn't sell it to us.
And, okay. I understand everyone wants the return on investment. It will be worthwhile to the community though, to preserve what we can, and especially since that was rezoned in two thousand and fifteen. Well, that was a year before this plan was even approved, let alone construction implemented. All right. I really appreciate your input on that. I got updates on the green space program. I had to go through open records as my fabulous commissioner was not updated recently. The chair of the green space advisory board didn't know. And so I think it's good for all of us because it's hard to find this information online right now, is that our current acreage that is put into conservation, and it's a little complicated, whether it's Army Corps or county, but we have thirteen thousand acres out of the thirty-six thousand, which is a goal. Why isn't that posted for the public on the county website?
Absolute posted.
Okay. I think those updates are important. Um, also with the fact that we've only really added eight percent in the last eighteen years, that's, that's not great. I think we could do a lot better job.
We ran the numbers. It's close to a little over a billion dollars to meet that goal that was put on by the state. They did fund a little bit of it.
They put, mm-hmm, half a million.
Then now that there's no more state funding.
Yeah, state funding went away. So a billion dollars to meet our goal. B with a billion B's.
B. That is a lot.
It's a lot of money.
Should I start playing the lottery?
To revisit that lost conversation we were having earlier.
Well, if I do win the lottery, first thing I'll do is buy green space. And then the next thing I'll do is fund phase two B of the Uchi Creek Greenway. The thing I found out recently from Steve Exley was that the Uchi Creek Greenway phase that was going to have the most impact on my life, which is why I was a big champion of it in the first place, has been bumped out to twenty twenty-eight. Now, phase four was going to be the Herford, I'm sorry, Hardy McManus. Now that's moved up because of the road expansion. That makes sense, fine. But the fact that this particular phase was bumped out because of the TIA funding and it would be requested in that block of twenty twenty-eight projects, um, I would like to know what in the world can we do to bump this up sooner so that those of us who want to prevent diabetes too, as well as digital dependency and depression, and want to reduce traffic, maybe we can have a public partnership funding initiative where, fine, go get that money in twenty twenty-eight and pay yourselves back, and right now put that money on the road so that those of us who want to be active and enjoy these natural resources around us can't.
TIA is a state program, so we have to follow their guidance. Um, they, we did put the TIA in the second band, I'm sorry, the TIA, Greenway in the second band programs, which was twenty-six through twenty-eight, I believe is the twenty-six, twenty-nine is the collection years for that. The state determines how they divvy that money out. Can influence it by making requests to kind of get pushed forward. Um, we have made it very clear to them that if somebody else can't meet their deadlines for a tier one, I'm sorry, a band one project or early band two project, we're ready. Let us have their spot and they can move back. It's all about cash flow for the state.
I appreciate that.
Collecting it and pushing it right back out.
Right.
I will say that I have, um, advised Mr. Exley to apply for a grant, phase between Grove Town and existing Greenway Trail where.
Right, under I twenty.
Correct. Well, past I twenty is where Canterbury Farms, all the way to Wrightsboro Road.
Connect the Canterbury Farms to the Uchi Creek existing Greenway.
Correct.
Off of Wrightsboro. Okay.
Applied for that grant. We should know in the next month or two if we get that grant.
Right.
Also advised him if he does not receive that grant to come back and talk to me. We've just recently had some additional, uh, lost money for the Greenway.
Right.
Some available. Our collections have met the requirements to open that project up. So we're going to start working on future phases to advance our, our TIA money.
Okay.
Hoping we can get it early, get as much design done, everything ready to go. So when that TIA money is available, we can hit the ground running. So.
Okay. I would like for it not to be in conjunction with the road widening. It'd be nice to not have to widen that road.
But William Few part of it?
Correct.
So we have no money to widen William Few. Now, we are going to be doing some turn lanes here and there.
I heard about the resurfacing and that, that still wouldn't allow for a little six-inch bike lane.
Right.
Off the side, uh, which is on, I guess, uh, infrastructure underneath the road has to be added. Um, well, I appreciate that and I would love it if you could do whatever you can so that I could enjoy that with my son before he goes to college.
Getting big. I saw him back there.
Well, we're the same size now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Go straight to the executive session. I believe Commissioner Richardson, we have a couple of issues.
Yes, sir. Make a motion to approve the restructuring and reclassification of the Tax Assessor's Office as presented.
Second.
Who wants to comment on? Yeah, I'll, I'll take that real quick. Uh, Mr. Ronnie's here if we need to ask anything from the Tax Assessor's Office. This is actually something that was approved as part of the budget, but we got it late in the budget process. We put the money, uh, in there to be able to accomplish this restructuring. So, um, it would have been a reclassification promotion situation had we done it with the budget, uh, but we didn't have it in time. It's a result of, of retirement of a longtime employee and some other employees that have moved around. Uh, the Tax Assessor's Office, uh, under Morgan's leadership, I think, is, has done a great job. Uh, there was a situation where there were a lot of direct reports. It's a very linear reporting structure before. Um, so we've been able to spread that out. We've been able to spread it out, uh, and do away with it, with a, a, a position. And, uh, again, the funding for this has already been put into the, to the budget for next year. This is just approving the actual positions and the individual salaries. Uh, there were a couple of salaries that, that jumped up significantly, but these are people that have the proper certifications that are going from appraiser positions to, or management supervisory. We have vetted this. The money is there for the budget, uh, in the budget this year. Uh, and I believe it's going to help them with their processes.
In this instance though, we've got, we have less people.
Yes.
Spreading the money around.
Correct, correct.
But we're not going to come back next year. I want more people.
No, we did away with, it was one or two, Morgan. How many positions we do away with? One? Yeah, I thought it was two. So we've done away with two positions.
Right. See what I'm saying? It's just.
Not bringing them back.
Take that money, we give it to the folks, and then we come back and want.
That's not the way we operate. Now, we, we hadn't typically done that. We hadn't grown our staff by that much.
Question. Morgan did talk to me about, and I, and I understand, I understand where everybody is in today's time, but the grade level, buddy jumping from grade nineteen to twenty-five, that just seems like a large jump. Many people, as we have in grades throughout the whole county, I just don't think that happens like that on a norm. And so.
It does. It's a, it's a position that he's going to, I think, Mr. Vice Chair. It's, he's going to a higher position. We've had situations where, and I hate to use it for example, but I use Mr. Slockler as an example, who was in our road department, who went to a division director position. He jumped, I don't know how many grades, ten, if not more grades at one time. So it really has to do with the position that he's filling, and he is qualified to fill that position. Um, if, if that guy didn't do it, we would have to advertise that position at that higher level and try to get somebody with certification from the outside to take it as well. So, but I, but I, I definitely understand your concern there. Um, and when we talked about it earlier, it made me go back and check to make sure, uh, but, but I, I am, I'm comfortable with it now. More comfortable with it now than I was.
Other questions? Motion and second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the settlement agreement with Phil Van.
Second. You, whoever, whoever wants to take it.
This is a, uh, this is a issue where we had a UTV that was operated, it's owned by a private individual who was operating as a, uh, reserved, I guess it was a reserved deputy, auxiliary deputy.
Correct.
Here, if he was directed to do an action, followed his direct orders, his machine was then hit by a car and damaged. This will make him whole. The county paying for this machine, taking ownership of this machine, will repair it and put it in our fleet.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Make a motion to approve five thousand dollars to. Four H, two thousand eight hundred Stanley Cannatino Azarino, tax parcel zero six five A zero three zero, twenty-five thousand Jonathan B. six five A zero three zero, twenty-five thousand Jonathan, B, Phil, tax parcels zero seven ones, zero zero two C, right of way and or easement, right, for the Hardy McManus road widening project.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Only one more item that needs to make me a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.